So, I want to thank everyone for attending today and for our presentation on our renewal proposal. So, our first item is public input. If anyone wants to say anything before our presentation, feel free, now's the time. Alright, so then we'll go right to Paul Mays, who will, I guess, give this presentation for, it feels like, the fifth or sixth time. He's getting pretty good at it. So, at least.
Little things change.
Yeah. So, thank you, Paul, and I'll turn the show over to you. Thank you.
I have Rebecca with me from my office in the hall. Most of you know her from our multiple meetings. What I'd like to do this evening is briefly give you an executive summary of where we are in terms of the master plan. And we're looking at three different items this evening, which I will get to regarding moving forward, how we proceed from this point into the future. As you all know, the master plan has been a thorough, I think, and ongoing process with a very committed committee of the Department of Board and Trustees and staff. We've been meeting for well over a year, close to two years almost by the time all is said and done regarding all the aspects of the building. And you will recall that the building master plan had two components to it. One was a study of the existing conditions of the building, that is, the physical plant itself and where we need to make improvements there, in conjunction with your mechanical engineers, who already have a proposal in place to make other improvements. And the second part was programmatic, how we could improve the library to meet the current needs of your community. Library services have changed quite a bit. I won't go back over all of those details. They've been discussed not only with the committee but at multiple board meetings as well. I am happy to answer questions as we go, though, and if anyone wants a refresher or primer on certain topics, we'll go back to them as you desire. But in the interest of keeping things moving forward, what I'd like to do is just walk you through some of the issues we had identified programmatically and talk about how we solve them and how they reflect the requests of the community. In other words, it wasn't simply the committee sitting around the table deciding certain things, but actually a deliberative process that looked at the gains that were possible and at realistic costs. So, in the existing layout of the library, which you're all familiar, we know that one of the most popular aspects of the existing building is the fact that we can use the meeting rooms and the lobby and the restrooms even when the library proper is closed. These meeting rooms get very heavy usage. And in fact, as we talk to the public, programs and things that happen in these rooms are some of the most important aspects of what happens here. And this is a reflection of how library services have changed over time beyond the collection and the transactive sort of relationship that people, that libraries have with patrons, not just a transactional but an experiential or existential idea of a space that, in which you belong. So, meetings, programs for adults and for children that are cross-generational, all of these are important. And it's one of the things that was requested specifically by the public, to improve the amount of meeting space, the quantity and the variety of sizes of meeting spaces. And so, we'll talk about a number of different options and how that relates to anything as small as two people, a tutor and a student perhaps, one person looking for a quiet place to sit, up to meeting rooms that seat, obviously, dozens and dozens of people. We know that there are some staff areas back here that were in need of some improvement for efficiency, but overall, the staff areas were in pretty good shape as they related to the southwest corner of the building. This is the front of the building, the west field. The staff areas are up here in the upper right corner. So, you'll see some improvements there, but overall, we were very careful to make sure that we were making improvements where they would have the largest impact on patron services, whether through staff efficiency or directly to patrons and what they would observe. Now, the counter of that is true when it comes to the PPS department. This is a staff area that is extremely cramped, and in fact, it's actually remote from the areas which they serve. That staff is primarily responsible for the help desk, the children's, and the adult services. So, it's tucked at one corner and difficult potentially to oversee all of those areas. And, as I say, there are fifteen, sixteen workstations in an area that should probably be seating maybe a little over half of that. We know that the children's department and the children's area, the program room, is exceedingly small for the type of things that happen there, which then puts a drag on some of the larger meeting spaces for the reason that not only is it not large enough, but now children and their families have to go through the entirety of the library to get to those spaces. So, that was an area we wanted to look at. And then, the teen, young, adult section as well is really just a portion divided off of the main collection. There's no defining characteristic that actually makes it a place which they potentially own and therefore use. One of the most interesting interviews I had was with the teen advisory group, who were very dynamic and extremely excited to talk about ideas about a space that might be their own. We know that local history is an important presence, and we have some components there along with this meeting room. And the other thing we called your attention to previously was the dynamic of soft seating. Again, this gets away from a transactional opportunity at a library where you go to a desk, get something, and take it out versus spending time there. So, things like chairs at the ends of staff aisles are difficult actually for people to use. They put you right in the middle of traffic, for example, or it's the opposite of finding a comfortable space to be. The results of the public input, we have quantified, you've seen all this material before, it's in the master plan, but it was also presented to you after we received it, and then again after we did the recurdium meeting. But you can see both staff and public space discussions related to some priorities that were identified. Safety and accessibility being one of the larger ones, particularly from the public. A cafe lounge idea was one that resonated with the public as well, and we'll talk about how we tried to fit that idea into going forward with flexibility for different options. Indoor reading niches, being places people can feel comfortable spending time and studying or reading as opposed to being in the middle of a giant open space, for example. That was important both to staff and to public, and then, of course, improved patron desk service, maker's space. These are all things that we talked about in varying degrees. How could we design something that would reflect all of these priorities? We know that improved workspaces mean better staff, better relationships with the public, character to the building, and restoration of finishes. We know it's a relatively new building in the sense of architecture. All buildings in the United States are relatively new buildings if you talk to a European, for example. But having said that, at twenty-five years, it's a quarter century old. So, the building is in need actually of some stewardship and some upgrade. And we know that the public responded to programs of different types, non-traditional and traditional programs, and access to the collection. These are things that we tried to take very seriously in looking at what we were developing. These are the results of over two thousand responses. So, it's a statistically significant number of input, amount of input we had here. This wasn't like two hundred people answering a survey. We actually, between the public charrettes, the town hall meetings that we did, the DOT exercise that we did both at a meeting and had at the front desk, the stakeholders surveys which we conducted, and then the various pieces of information that came in from people writing to us in the staff interviews, over two thousand responses contributed to these numbers. So, when you think about the population of your community, for example, that's a fair number to represent things. As we look at these, we say, where are the areas that we want to, you know, aside from traditional collection, which is obviously a priority, we want to deal with accessibility and safety. The cafe lounge idea had large numbers, staff workspace, the children's room had a priority, and indoor reading niches, these are all big numbers for us. And so, these are the things we wanted to focus on as we look at how we can continue to provide programming and expand our potential for that. This is the overall master plan that you will see in your documents, and I think you might have a copy in front of you as well.
They're on the table over by the door. There are several documents there, most of which the board members have gotten before. The map drawing that you're seeing there is new as of today, so help yourself with one of those. There's another copy of the summary chapter of the master plan, and also a one-page document I prepared which hits the highlights of the expansion. And lastly, there's the proposed contract for Buckaroo Paul Mays and Buckaroo May's service if you decide to pursue this project. So, those are the documents that are on the table.
Great. It's okay if I continue talking while people are grabbing things, you think you're... Alright, so we'll keep things moving along. This is the overall master plan. Again, there are no surprises here, I don't think. Everyone has seen this. If you've attended board meetings along the way, the committee has seen it ad nauseam at this point. We've had monthly meetings on and on and on. But I wanted to point out some of the key areas and how they reflected and what we were looking at in terms of public input. So, you'll see the primary meeting rooms remain intact, and they remain off of that separate lobby, but the lobby itself has expanded, and this was for multiple reasons. One is to create flexibility out here. You can see we brought the bowl from the lobby into a display case, and we've provided access to another meeting room or pair of meeting rooms here, so that now we have the large meeting room, the meeting room we're in, another meeting room of almost this size again, and an area we're calling a lounge. This could be a cafe, it could be a lounge, but it's another public space, all of which open even when the doors to the library are closed. So, we have one, two, three, or four, five different public meeting spaces to help alleviate the load that is currently on the reservation of these rooms now, and they are of different sizes and have different functions. So, obviously, for acoustic reasons and presentation reasons, the large meeting room remains essentially as is. The only change is the addition of a door at one end that allows us now to bring in people on stage. That is, at the presentation or performance end of the room, rather than people having to come in from the back of the room and go all the way down the aisle. A simple functional change. The other thing this did was open up access to the restroom. So, we weren't going back and around the corner and down along narrow corridor to find the public restrooms. And in restoring these restrooms, we also created a family restroom. That is, a restroom that is a single fixture, unisex restroom, changing table and so forth, but it's right off the main lobby. This is particularly important in libraries because many times you have families with multiple children and making decisions about it. Even I, I have a twenty-year-old son who has autism, and even I have difficulty sometimes. Do you send him into, or my wife, do you send him into the men's room alone? You know, there are issues related to this. And this is a very forward way of thinking about providing service and hospitality to our entire community. We're showing a mobile kiosk out here that allows us to do multiple things, including display of ongoing events, upcoming reservations. Could potentially even be reserving books or picking up collection, things like that. But this area then expands the use of all of these rooms. We have a back-of-house book drop into a circ staff area that's now improved in efficiency. The circ desk has moved here so that we come into the lobby, and now, when we enter this building, we're looking down the spine, down that skylight spine, which architecturally is how the building was laid out in the first place, and emphasizing that. So, you'll see the lounge or cafe area can be open to that or open to the library itself, and it's flexible enough. We can try the cafe idea. We can make it a lounge. Either way, it's a casual area, and it also allows us to do things like book sales. So, for example, we keep book sale storage, but now it can be in one of these two spaces. It can be in the large meeting room. There could be a perpetual book sale in some component of this. So, it gives us flexibility to provide those services over a longer period of time. You'll see, we moved local history back into this end again with the compressed storage, and we have one, two, three, four study rooms. And then, we have this meeting room, which is divisible into five or six study rooms in addition, and if there's really overflow, this meeting room can also be reserved. So, we have the potential for up to eight study rooms at a given time. Now, you wouldn't reserve that twenty, you know, the entire time you're open, but there may be periods of time, three to five on certain days, for example, that you might have eight different study rooms. At other times, by dividing these things, we can reserve part or all of these rooms for various functions. We've made a connection to the back here, and this is the addition part of the master plan. This is actually essentially taking the children's wing, which is back here, and growing it and putting it at this end of the building. So, we come into an area that goes basically from dynamic to quiet. So, we have a program room, and then a casual activity room here with family restrooms off of both. We have a help desk that ties to the help desk here, and the PPS is now moved, you can see, giving them adequate room to do their, to do their work. Supervisors offices and windows and doors into program rooms, into the spaces they, they work in, and even into the young adult rooms, and how the teens have their own space. There's a family restroom at this end of the building as well. Now, people aren't making a decision about, do I wrap up my laptop and all my stuff and go all the way to the other end of the building to use the restroom? It's right here. And then, the staff restroom here as well. And then, the children's area, as I say, this is an addition of a little over six thousand square feet. It's about a twenty-three percent increase in the overall size of the building. The existing building is twenty-seven thousand and change. The addition is six thousand three hundred and change. Because we're not renovating all of the things, the gray areas are essentially remaining intact. We're actually doing a renovation of about twenty thousand square feet as opposed to the entire twenty-seven thousand. What this does for us overall, it creates a collection increase of over ten, almost eleven percent in the adult collection, eight or nine percent in the children's collection, a thirty-eight percent increase in the young adult collection, and a total collection increase of eleven percent. Remember, collection increase was not the primary thing that we're shooting for based on public commentary, however. Seating increases over fifty-seven percent from your existing seating layout, and I would argue is much more efficient. We've created focus areas and lounge-type seating in two areas rather than stuck in the middle of the large spine, for example. In terms of meeting room space, we have increased that. Now, we have meeting room A is fifteen hundred square feet, B is seven hundred square feet, C four hundred fifty-eight, and then we have additional meeting rooms of two eighty-one, one ten, and one seventy-four plus the various study rooms. Overall, the library spaces, when we look at collection areas, the adult collection has increased twenty-seven percent, children's collection thirty-eight percent, young adult a hundred three percent, so more than doubled in size. Program areas have increased sixty-two percent, and study rooms two hundred nine percent. Those are the primary things that the public will see as improvements to what they've asked for and, and looking at things they will directly understand. So, these are some of those numbers that I was just reviewing with you. Increases in collection, increases in seating. Meeting spaces in particular are twenty-eight percent increase in the amount of meeting space. All of this, again, for an addition, that's about a twenty, twenty-three percent increase. And these are the library spaces in total. We did a couple of quick sketches of some of those seating areas, so this is what we were talking about, creating comfortable and compact seating areas that are more lounge-like rather than a chair at the end of every aisle, for example, where somebody is always rushing by you or coming across you, across your feet. And they might include features that could be anything. Could be a display case, could be a fireplace, could be an aquarium, could be, you know, we're defining a space and a focus, but what it is is something we can define later as we go along. In terms of site improvements, it's obviously good news related to how we connect to Western Avenue based on the potential for a trail immediately behind the building and on a connection roadwise back to winding road to bring us out to a safer intersection. Having said that, we want to look at how this building will interact with people potentially using this trail behind it. So, we'll come to that in a minute, too. But what we've talked about in the upper lot, that is, the area above the retaining wall, you come up a drive. We have fifty-seven overflow parking spaces here. We rearranged the parking here in order to bring an island or peninsula out on axis with the existing building. This allows us to put some trees and greenery, benches, handicap parking along an aisle so that they're only crossing right here, because right now, folks who are mobility challenged are actually parking in areas here, and there's no sidewalk. They're going through lanes of traffic to get to the building. One of the other important improvements in the site plan is taking the book drops from a location here, which is unsafe for staff to get back and forth, but also a bottleneck for people trying to use a single-height book drop. We would make sure there's one that's SUV height and one that is sedan height. And having said that, brought it over here, so the bottleneck happens here and not where all the traffic is coming. So, even if people are dropping off, you can still come in and go two ways out. You're not closing off the entire area. Overall, it means an increase, the proposed spaces, we go from ninety to one hundred twenty-seven spaces.
That's not including, yeah, that side.
And that does not include the staff lot that's currently across the way. We've sort of left that as it is. Now, having said that, this upper lot is topographically at a different height than this lot. So, you see there are stairs that bring us down to this level. There's a plaza area right outside the lounge cafe that we talked about. So, we have the opportunity to do some outdoor things here, but this area means coming down. So, families, for example, wouldn't want to park up there if they have strollers and things like that. That's why we're calling this overflow parking. Family parking and handicap parking would be in this main area. It may be that you might even switch, and this might become staff parking and that public parking, but those are things we've worked out because we have to merge a pair of lanes to travel. I mentioned earlier that with a cat going behind the building here, we may want to think about connections to the building from other sides. Currently, it's obviously very front-facing Western Avenue, although to say that, when you're on Western Avenue, you don't feel very connected to this building. There's a sea of asphalt between you and the front door. It's not very inviting. The idea here is almost creating a gateway. But by having a plaza here, this, it may allow us to come off of this trail and gently come along the building and to the front this way. And that, that outdoor plaza area could be a very attractive feature as well, particularly with hedges and protection that keep it separate from the parking and the traffic noise on Western Avenue. So, these are, these are improvements we've been following carefully. As other developments happen, it's obvious, too, that additional pedestrian traffic, we can accommodate it this way rather than ignoring it, particularly if we come along the building here. Overall, the costs here, these are very similar. I presented these to the building committee a few weeks ago. I just wanted to give you a few updates. There are a few items in red here. So, we have about six hundred fifty thousand in site development. We have a little over one and a half million in building improvements. This is everything from skylight improvements and resealing and repairing the skylight, basement recleaning and repair, windows and doors throughout the building, interior finishes throughout the building and so forth. We have building construction, both the addition and renovations. The total, about three million. That brings our hard costs, or the cost of the materials and the construction themselves, to about five point three million. I will note here, you're currently undergoing a project to bring a new water service into the building, and it's teeing off from that point. It's been sized in order to provide for a fire protection sprinkler system in the building. In consultation with the engineers that you have working on that project, I think it was determined in general that it's more efficient to try and do the sprinklers throughout the building as part of the construction project, because we'll be taking ceilings apart, taking walls apart and so forth, and putting everything back, than it was to do it in the engineering project that related to that. So, since the last, the last estimate had been developed, we added that number in here, so that's in this project rather than in another project. So, that is at twelve dollars a square foot. That comes to the little, about over four hundred thousand dollars. The other thing I would add is, you see it in red here, we have an allowance for furnishings. For the new spaces, we've put the entire thirty-seven dollars a square foot that we typically carry for costs like this. We've added another allowance of two hundred eighty-five thousand to replace some furniture in the existing building. That doesn't mean we need to replace every shelf unit. We probably want to replace every chair just based on their condition and so forth. But having said that, it's a healthy allowance for a total furnishing budget within which we can work to upgrade the experience of both patrons and staff. And then, all these other pieces combine into the soft costs. We have contingencies for inflation between the point now when we're doing this and when this will actually did. If this goes for a referendum in the spring, it gets submitted to the State Education Department late next year, even with an expedited review, several months before it comes back from that. So, you're not under construction lightly until 2020. So, we know that there's been already in the past eighteen months, a significant change in the cost of projects. We've been witnessing it in projects we bid up and down the Hudson Valley. Having healthy contingencies allows us to make sure the project can move forward. Having said that, one of the things we're going to want to do here is make sure that you're working with a construction manager to do a tight cost estimate that actually goes and bids each of these pieces to get real numbers. So, this is good as a conceptual idea for the master plan, but we want to base a final referendum number if you approve going forward on something a construction manager develops. Until now, that conversation has included the potential to share our construction manager's services with the school district if they move forward with their project. There are efficiencies in having the same construction manager do that. The short version, the construction managers are responsible for the budget and the schedule. And if they're doing a work already in gilding for the school district, and if you do work here and provide that site supervision, there's an efficiency of scale in doing something like that. That number, whatever that may be, is not included in here. So, working that out with the, working out the construction manager costs with the school district, or whether it's something you're doing alone, is something we'll have to figure out. Total, though, the conceptual budget at this point is seven point nine million once I add the fire protection. So, that's the number we're at for the scheme we've developed here, including renovations in the existing building that we've talked about, as well as others that we didn't even go through tonight, have in the past. It includes the addition, it includes the site work and the parking areas and so forth. So, that is a quick summary of where we are at the moment, and I know there were some other things we were going to go over, but Tim, let's tackle the questions you made.
I just want to mention to everyone here that, and it may have said it in the ninety seconds I went to buy a soda, but the plan is to build the additional space first and move the youth department into it so that, in essence, you don't have to close the library during the building process. Closing the library is the opposite of providing library services. So, we were hoping not to do that. And then, also, this master plan document that you could have picked up on the table over there is from our previous meeting. So, the cost summary sheet in it that he's presenting today is new. So, we will update the master plan and put public copies out, but if you're here tonight, most of the people who picked up one of those packets are board members. And I want to say this as nicely as possible, but I just didn't know if you would bring the packet that you had already been provided. So, I wanted to make sure that you had access to another packet tonight, but that page does need to be updated.
The conversation with the engineer happened since the last committee meeting. We discussed it at the last committee meeting. I had it in red and said, here's an open variable. In the interest of caution, we've included it here, sort of a worst-case scenario. Again, construction manager will help us decide that. The phasing, as Tim mentioned, we limited the phasing in the master plan for the very reason that if you do a referendum, it makes the most sense to try and accomplish as much at once as possible. And exactly as he said, the construction of this addition can happen relatively independently, and then allows us essentially to create a staging area. So, this gets built, things move into it, then things move into that space, then things move into that space. It saves us the cost of collection relocation on one big scale of temporary location, and it keeps library services in this spot all through construction. So, there will be disruption. There's no doubt about that. We will have headaches. There will be noise. But we have a long history of doing projects just like this to allow that kind of thing to happen and making sure, obviously, that safety and egress are maintained throughout, during the construction process. It's part and parcel of the specifications that we put together for that type of project. So, are there any questions before we move? There were a couple of things, as I mentioned, there were some things that I wanted to make sure we were touching on moving forward, but I want to make sure we have an understanding where we are now.
Currently, the parking lot, the lanes are one-way, and I noticed on the proposal that they're two-way.
Right. We kept one-way here, one-way here. This got wider because we put this peninsula on axis with the existing entry. So, notice that this no longer has three rows of cars, and the reasoning is so that as we come in here, if there is a bottleneck here, we can go around and come back out. But we eliminated one row. This is what currently a double stack of parking the way it is now. We cut it down to one.
Is it possible?
I just, I just see more accidents with having it two ways and cars going up and down.
Well, we can look at it going one way. That's something we can develop as we go along. Again, if it is one-way all the way here, we could do this one-way this way. But as you come out here, if this is going to be one-way, you're going to have to loop back around just to get to this area. But that's, we can explore that.
And that's the way, that's the way it is now. And the other thing about the way that it is now is that no matter what you paint on the parking lot, people go.
Correct. The main things we're trying to eliminate, and I've noticed this many times crossing it myself, is the width of the aisle here directly parallel with the front of the building is wide enough that people go much too fast through there. So, by constricting it here and restricting the amount of crosswalk, we're making it safer for especially mobility-challenged persons or children's parking, but we're also restricting the speed limit there. But this, again, it's conceptual. We'll continue to develop those ideas.
And what Tim said about it, my second question on it, which was, currently, you have arrows on, we have arrows on the ground, which when it snows or whatever, people don't see, and you still have people, as Tim said, going the wrong way and creating hazardous situations. Will there be any permanent above-ground signage to win Will there be any permanent above-ground signage to indicate that the aisles are one, that the aisles are one-way?
Yes. In our estimate, and part of the soft cost includes a consistent, keyword, consistent signage package both outside and inside the building. That is one that ties all these things together and isn't just so much visual noise, for example, that you start ignoring signs because there are so many of them. So for example, we'll be identifying electric charging stations for parking spots, family parking as well as handicap parking, and even directions about where in the lots to go and the drop. But then within the building, a consistent signage package as well that picks up on where you go to prove intuitive use. So yes, an overall signage package, that's several months of work by itself. Usually, Megan or Lisa in our office will be working with the staff to come up with not only the graphic component of it, but exactly what they say and where it's going to be important. So outdoor signage, you brought up a very good point, is something that in this area of the country gets covered in snow a lot of times if it's not actually above ground.
Okay, and my final question about the parking lot is, has this, is this plan being worked with the local fire department to ensure that their ladder truck and engines can make the turns and get in and have a clear fire lane in front of the building?
It will be, if the board approves moving forward, that would be one of the things we developed prior to the referendum, but I will say that we haven't restricted any of the turning radii that currently exist, so they're at least as wide as they are now. But we would want to meet with them, we would also want to meet with, there's a group related to stormwater specialties, because I know that previously there had been interest in a water retention or seepage area out there. So those are things we would want to keep developing as well.
Great.
And another one to tie into that is discussing with the people developing this, how that connects to our site. We don't want it to just be an opening and a gate, for example. We want to worry about security and lighting that area and how we get to the building and make sure that it's safe for everybody.
Great. Thank you.
Chris?
It would be helpful if you broke down the costs, I think, to current building versus addition.
Okay.
I can figure out because how you have it set of new construction versus renovations and blocks, but I think it'd be nice to have a breakdown, maybe break that building construction down, addition versus.
Yes, those of you looking at the cost, you'll see that there are different line items, but you're saying there are whole separate category to break them out.
So that would be easily, easy to see that two-thirds of the, I think it is about two-thirds of the building is on the current building.
Right.
One-third is on the additions, and that means additions are important, one-third is the cost.
We could certainly do that, and that's a good point too, in how this is presented to the public in general. Again, this is a conceptual estimate at this point because it's a conceptual plan. As we work with the construction manager, they're going to have a whole other way of looking at, you know, square feet of sheet rock and number of screws. But having said that, we will want to think about how it gets talked about. Trying to keep things in an executive summary for a master plan, sometimes, you're right, you oversimplify it, which combines or consolidates things, but it's easy enough to break it out as you see there's every line item already. But point taken, we'll definitely update that.
Paul, what's the percentage of the construction manager? I mean, what is the loan rate, and what would it add to this?
I would guess three to four percent. Now, if you're getting a volume of scale advantage by sharing with the school district, that will affect that obviously. What we would typically do is have a conceptual description of the project like this, solicit proposals from multiple construction management firms, interview them, and then select them based, just like you do with an architect, you select it based on the rapport and the expertise, and then hopefully the cost fits within that, but you wouldn't want to base it, it's not like you're buying toilet paper, you just don't want the cheapest one.
The even better.
That may be true. Having said that, is everyone aware of what a construction manager does? Do I need to clarify that? I know I've explained it before, but are we all good with that?
But it isn't, that would be have to include in the final cost.
My rule of thumb is when...
That's why I just want to make sure we, the scope of the project is...
I would say, and that's why I put it in red there. Let's not forget this item.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
My rule of thumb is when you get to two to three million dollars in construction, when you cross that threshold, you're really looking at a construction manager. Under that, you might get away with a clerk of the works or a simpler version of site supervision on a daily basis, but above that, the logistics of publicly bidding needs become more complicated. Now, we're still here through construction, I would say, there's an architectural component, but the CN is specialist in budgeting and scheduling.
It's just not...
It's not a small number, that's true.
That is...
You're holding an authorization for pre-referendum services?
Yeah.
That is simply the work between now and when the referendum takes place, to coordinate with your construction manager, to give them the information, to do a detailed estimate, to work with your, the persons who are putting graphics, we would put graphics together, we would do more renderings and things like that for the referendum. No, that doesn't include a construction manager themselves. One of the other costs leading up to the referendum will be coordinating with not just your attorney, but the school district's attorney, because you're a school district library, and potential bond counsel. So there's a series of, they're built into the soft cost. We have allowances for each of those items, but there's a whole series of things that lead up to a referendum in order to make sure everything is legally spelled out correctly, and that we're not at risk by having not performed correct due diligence in preparation for a referendum. So there's a lot of detail to work out with the master plan, thinking of it more as a conceptual document to say, this is the direction we're headed, we're going to work out a lot of these details as we go. And I should emphasize too, since I have to fill every silence with something, it is a conceptual plan. So as I mentioned, we're calling this a lounge, it could be a cafe, it could be a casual seating area. The idea in library design, as I'm frequently asked, where the future of that is going, is about creating a flexible enough space that we can continue to change it and have it reflect what services are. So things like these study rooms are currently very popular, but it doesn't mean that that can't shift at some point in the future. Those aren't structural or load-bearing walls that prohibit them from being moved at some point, for example. We might even do them in something called a dirt wall system, which is technically a furnishings item. It's a glass wall system that compresses to the floor and to the ceiling above and can be shifted or changed. You wouldn't do it every week or even every year, but it's something that after three years, nobody's using these, we can shift them and make them a different size rooms, for example.
One thing that I'm trying to connect to what you're just saying, and I lost my bridge point.
I think I'm talking.
I know my major point, which is that in the last fifty years in public libraries, it's become much, much more common to hold programs, events, public meetings and so forth. And so whoever was involved in planning the nineteen ninety-two building theoretically may have been criticized by some members of the public for planning two large meeting rooms, one we're in and the one next door. But today, they've become so indispensable that in fact, we're trying to add more meeting room space in this proposal. So, you know, it's not theoretically possible to know what people are going to want twenty-five years from now, but if you look at the last twenty-five years or the last fifty years, those rooms, I would argue, those two rooms are really a huge part of the essence of this library. And what I'm trying to say is, you know, maybe someday, and this, I'm not trying to use a cafe as a key idea here, but, you know, fifty years from now, every library may have a cafe, you know, or a drop-in children's activity area or whatever, you know. It's, libraries do change, and of course, we all love, we saw in the, in the public survey results, a ton of support for what was called traditional library collections, even in a day and age where many people are making a decision whether they're going to read electronically or in paper form or in both, but there's still huge support for that core idea that a library is a collection of books, magazines, other print material, but it's become so many other things, you know, that, you know, sometimes it takes a little bit of a leap of faith about some particular component of the new plan. And what I like about what you said is, if people don't want a cafe, they'll tell us, you know, and we can change it into something else, so flexibility.
That's a good data point there, the percentage of meaning, you know, because people aren't aware of that. Say, why build more than twelve? I mean, because ninety-nine percent...
Yeah, that's right.
So, I mean, those are really educational for us.
I will say it's been a sophisticated clientele when it's come to interviewing the public. That's not true in every community.
Right.
And there are some that are much more tradition-bound in the way they view their library services, but perhaps because of the proximity of the various academic institutions or the nature of the demographics, I don't know, but people recognize that the programs and those opportunities that are here are very, very important.
Paul, you mentioned that construction costs are increasing and likely to increase in the future. Have you ever had a problem where, we'll discuss with our construction manager the actual cost, and then we'll come up with a bonding, that libraries don't bond enough and have, and essentially run out of money? Is that, have you ever come across that? And what kind of, how do you not, first of all, how do you not do that? And if you do get in that situation, what are the remedies?
There are, there are two primary remedies, well, three, I'll say three primary remedies. One, as I say, is having a construction manager involved early on. Architects are, we're basing this on spreadsheets, we keep databases of projects that we've bid all over New York State. So we're basing it on this area of New York State and what we've seen. But by definition, that's an historic book, right? We're looking back at things and then trying to project, you know, into something that's going to be a year or a year or two ahead. So getting a construction manager who's actually going to go out and get a price from a mechanical contractor, get a price from an electrical contractor for materials and for labor, which will be defined by the Department of Labor because of prevailing wage rates, getting all that homework done, which is what you're paying a CM to do, will make this a much more broken down, probably more broken down than you want it. So the happy medium is going to be something to do, what we're showing and what they're showing when it comes to presenting it eventually. So having a detailed cost estimate from the beginning, having conservative numbers from the beginning, and all of these, as I said, are based on square footages. I'm not taking things from Greene County from 2010, because that's obviously going to be a different thing. It was during the recession, prices were good. You know, we're now in an economic time where people are busy, which is bad for bidding prices, and because of the cost of materials that come from other countries or various things, those are all going up too. So that's led to this sort of inflation. So being conservative with these numbers, which we have, we've gone to the high end of all those. The second thing, I mentioned, the series of contingencies. So for example, there's three hundred nineteen thousand built in just for inflation, not for anything else already. There's a second contingency called development of the concept, meaning it's conceptual design right now. We don't want to, every time we start adding a detail, we don't want to have to say no, that's not in the budget. So there's actually another two hundred and some thousand dollars in there, so that we, we know that those things will come up during the development. And then thirdly, during construction, we have another five percent added on, so that when, when the backhoe digs in the ground and you find something that no one knew was there, we have monies to deal with that. The third strategy, sorry to make this so long, but I just went too short.
No.
The third strategy is something called alternates, meaning that as we develop a set of construction documents, we have a base project that includes these spaces, these things we're doing, but there may be things, like these feature areas, that we do as an alternate. So if you buy a car and it has air conditioning and has this thing, but does it have a moonroof? That's an option. So we have the base price of the car, and then we have these options. We bid them, see where the bids come in. If the bids are tight, we can't take those alternates, but we want to make sure that the alternates are things that are, we obviously, the sprinkler system is not an alternative, it's something we have to do. But those are the three strategies, conservative, early pricing now, making sure that we have contingencies, and then using alternates as a control strategy later. The other advantage to alternates is that as additional monies come in, as almost always happens, you're going to pass a referendum. You're going to apply for divisional library development grants, which we can talk about this evening if you'd like. You may get items from politicians, for example, member items, bullet aid, whatever we're calling it these days, but they may not come in until after the referendum. So you may not be able to accept the alternate on the day bids come in, but if more money's coming in, we've defined what that price is, and as long as they haven't constructed over this area already, a lot of times we can keep them open and then apply them later on. So we've already bid them, we have the number, and we can add it as a retrofit. I would also say, we would be applying over multiple years to the divisional library development for grants. There is an annual grant process, bids are due in the summer. Your issue is as a school district library, you have to have SED approval before you can apply for the grant. So we'll talk about some strategies for maximizing that, but as an example, let's say, there are some things that we might do at the very end of the project that we want to make sure that we can retrofit, but we might wait until, let's make sure everything comes in, we're on budget, we've done all this, then we can apply that grant to something at the end. It might be one of those alternates that we held off on.
So Paul, the price point is always to what comes up. So in your estimation, what are you saying, you know, when you look at the numbers on, like per taxpayer, you know, is it, I mean, that's fundamental, obviously.
It is, that's not something I've researched yet. That will take, and you're right, when, if you approve going forward with this, that's one of the things we will develop prior to the referendum. So first question is, per hundred thousand dollars of house value, what is it? That's absolutely true, but at this level of discussion on a conceptual design...
Even at eight million, you can't, I mean, it's a rough...
We could if I, we'd have to go to your town clerk, what is the tax, I can't answer it off the top of my head, I apologize.
No, I mean, I...
We could have a rough number. Within a few weeks, we could come up with something. Legitimate, I mean, the real number would come from bond counsel who would be defining, you know, that if we move forward, the bond is going to be over this period of time at this rate, these are the going rates that we expect, because keep in mind, not to cloud the issue, but you're not going to bond for this all at once. In other words, you pass a referendum, you don't get the money the next day, you don't need it the next day, it's going to be timed before the thing's under construction. So typically, what happens is something called a bond anticipatory note, meaning that you would take a short-term bond to cover the cost leading up to that, and then you would bond the whole amount, sometimes you might even do that twice, but you would bond the whole amount after you know what the final costs are. In that way, you're not bonding for money that you weren't going to spend, so you can make sure that you're keeping the cost of...
For the referendum, is the total anticipated cost?
It typically is. Yes, that's right.
I mean, that's my...
But if we apply for grants for additional things, for example, that would be...
No, understood, but you don't know that at the time of the referendum, I just want to be clear, so, you know.
That's correct. Yes, the total cost, and you're in a situation where you have to put that total cost here, and the reason being, we can't rely on the grants, let's say.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
We don't know they're going to come, or political monies or whatever they may be. So we need to put the whole number in there and then, and then see where...
I saw the initial area, yeah.
Yes, you're right. Questions on the master plan? There were three things in my experience that we want to look at then in terms of where we go from here. One is acceptance of the work of the committee and design professionals and all that's gone into the master plan, accepting that as a general concept of an idea and a general concept of a budget for developing and moving forward. That would be one action I go potentially to the board is to essentially accept, formally accept the master plan. The second would be authorization of our services to work with a construction manager, whoever, and legal counsel, and the other issues related to getting ready for a referendum. I provided you a proposal for that with an hourly not-to- exceed rate, meaning you'll only be billed for the hours we spend on it. Now, if it, if it turns out that you want fifty public meetings, we'll have to talk about the not-to- exceed part, but in general, I base that on our experience, and these are the types of things. And I think you don't need well enough now, you've been doing a lot of things above and beyond to meet with people and make sure we're covering those things. The third item would then be to talk about fundraising and how you're going to supplement with other sources of income, because the referendum is one thing to work toward, but you can't wait till the last minute if you are going to apply monies that are available in a capital account, or if you're going to fundraise monies, or if some, sometimes if you're going to get political monies, there's a big announcement about that, but we'll want to know that as early as possible so that the referendum reflects the known items. The grants are unknown items, we know we can't include them, but the known items, we want to make sure the taxpayers are aware, we've done this in order to offset the costs that we've identified.
And your proposal includes the bond council? It did include bond council?
No, we're not, no, it's us coordinating with the bond counsel.
No, I know, but that's on our side, so I don't think we have...
Because, right, but they'll have questions, for example, what's the construction classification? How are we doing this? Because all of that reflects in how, for example, certain types of construction, they can only bond for twenty years instead of thirty, and that greatly affects the number you were asking about, what's actually the average taxpayer.
The bond counsel finds the other writer in that?
The bond counsel, yes, there are firms, and I can name several of them, but they, usually you would... usually you would use the one the school works with.
Yeah.
That's the simplest process because they already know this community and your charter to serve there is identical. But you don't have to. But essentially, yes, they would identify the sale of the bonds, the most appropriate time to do it, and how to get the best rates and so forth. But again, they're not working in a vacuum. They need to know information that we have to give them and the construction manager would have to give them.
Okay, any other questions? Public? I'll come back. Well, I guess our first order would be, uh, of this plan. So discussion, is there any discussion that we want to have? I, as I've let you all know, I believe I want to take a vote on this plan tonight. Certainly if we have outstanding questions, we can postpone it. But, you know, this process has been going on for a while, so I would like to see it moved tonight. So I would open for any sort of discussion. So, yes. If there's no discussion, well, I guess, yeah, you can have a motion first, yes. That would be, I guess, the first order of business, so I'd say a second.
What, what's the motion? Are we, is it the master plan?
Do we accept the master plan as a?
Right, just the master plan, okay, that's what I'm just saying, okay, thanks.
Who wants to take the second?
Okay, so then we can discuss the motion. So we, we found out an interesting caveat that we can, you just want to talk more about?
Okay, so David Gilliam, our fiscal officer, on his own initiative, which I would commend, reviewed the memorandum of understanding between the school district and the library and found section 5A and 5B of it that would seem, on our reading, to indicate that since we are not the owner of the building or the land, the school district is, that we may not have the authority on our own to engage in this project. So David brought this to my attention yesterday. So Margaret Garrett and I had a conversation with Chris Lanchanton about the MOU. So if you take a side trip back to that and remember that at our last annual meeting of the school district and the library, we decided that we needed to review the MOU and rewrite it. And two, two of our board members, and I believe someone from the school district volunteered to be on that committee. I honestly can't recall. I do know that our two board members were active in contacting me and saying, when are we going to meet? When are we going to meet? But for some reason, it didn't get done. And so I called Chris Lanchanton, our lawyer, explained all that to her. She feels, first of all, that while that is potentially an important situation, the language of the resolution that you take, that Chris just suggested, could be made in such a way as to indicate that resolution of that particular issue on the MOU would obviously need to proceed because we don't want to do any project that's not legal. I asked Chris Lanchanton on my own authority to review the entire MOU. It's my guess that about 50% of it is completely unnecessary at this point. Relates to the conditions of the relationship with the school district in 1992 when this building was built. So a lot of it can come out. I further asked her to, to find out, there are lots of school district public libraries and lots of school districts in the state of New York. Are they all governed by an MOU? Or is this a document that exists solely because of the fact that we, you know, worked with them to construct the building in 1992? So she's working on that. You know, beyond an MOU, there is of course state law that governs the way that a school district and a school district public library operate with each other. So she's going to give us an opinion on whether we need an MOU at all. And of course, an opinion about the matter of whether we have the authority to, to work on a project if we are not the owner. And one other important factor in the MOU is that it addresses who is responsible for ensuring various aspects of the existence of the library. So that's obviously a concept that needs to be agreed upon between the school district and the library. But again, may be governed strictly by state law rather than by an MOU. So she's working on that, but she does not see that as a, a blocking, something that would block us from voting tonight to move forward on a project. It simply becomes a detail that you have to square away in order to do the project legally. So that's where we stand with the MOU.
Can Nyla be of some help in, you know, in finding out whether other school districts and libraries have such MOUs?
Sure, that's a good idea, yep. I'll call over to Nyla. There's one other thing about the MOU. Oh, the other thing, just for full disclosure, is that one thing I said to Chris on the phone, with all due respect to the two board members and myself and the representatives from the school district who volunteered to rewrite the MOU, as I previously stated, maybe rewriting it isn't the appropriate thing to do. But secondly, maybe we ought to, and I've asked her for her opinion on this, should we just have our counsel and their counsel work together to create an MOU? As opposed to having a bunch of us laypeople write an MOU, which our two lawyers would then probably change a great deal, you know? So that's a further question that I've asked her to weigh in on. I don't believe, Margaret, that she gave us any kind of timetable in terms of answering that set of questions. But I also don't think that it is much of a problem for her. She seemed to take it kind of.
I agree, and we did make her aware that the vote was tonight before, meaning it's next week.
So that's full disclosure on the MOU. And again, commendations to David for, you know, going the extra mile and reading that.
Yes, thank you, David.
Yeah, thanks, David. Yes. Right, right. Well, there's things in there that are just, why is it the MOU itself a problem? So I have it here with me, I can, and, you know, you might as well just read you, it'll take about 30 seconds. But read you the part that concerned David, which is, it's called section five, "With respect to future expansions of the library. A. If GCSD can delegate decision-making to the library and the library can carry the principal debt on its financial books and receive interest on bond dollars not yet spent, then GCSD agrees that all decisions with respect to such expansion shall be made by the library. B. If the GCSD cannot delegate decision-making to the library with respect to such expansion, then GCSD shall carry the principal debt on its books as per education law and shall receive interest on bond monies raised and not yet expended. All aspects of such expansion, including but not limited to the adequacy of the planned expansion and the selection of contractors and other vendors, shall be decided by the library after consultation with the GCSD." So Chris Lanchanton and I talked about these two clauses. If they can delegate decision-making and if they can't. This is a document written in 1991. And we think the reason those clauses are written that way is because they were saying today, when they wrote it, they can delegate. But will they be able to delegate under the law in 2019 or whatever year the library goes to expand? And so, you know, she just needs to check the law and make sure. And it's a good example of how maybe it's just the law we need to depend on instead of these two contingent statements that raise more questions than they, than they answer. Like, there's an education law somewhere that tells us what we can do. And I would argue that it is more important than this document. There's a legal term for what takes precedence, I don't know that, but I don't know why they had to write that then. But I'm not sure we need it now, you know? So I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, either way, it doesn't change anything that happens tonight. It's just a future step made or may not be necessary depending on what the lawyer says. I just wanted to make you aware of that, but it really doesn't affect anything definitely tonight.
And I think the reason for that is, I think you're voting to move forward with the project. You're not voting that you will pursue this project to the ends of the earth. Like, you'll pursue it until you have a reason that you can't do it for whatever reason, you know? But I think what we're looking for is an affirmation, if that is the feeling of the board, that the project is worthy of pursuing, you know?
We have a motion on the floor.
Yep, we're still discussing this. Anyone else want to say anything? It's a big project, so now's the time to kind of discuss it. So we talked about a number for, per, for the average resident. So I'm no expert in finance, but looking at the school district's numbers, because they recently, you know, as we know, are having their own capital project. So looking at their numbers, trying to extrapolate from using our numbers, I can very, very, very roughly ballpark it. I think we said about $50 per 320,000. Now, I'm no expert, it certainly will definitely be somewhat different than that, but that is a very rough ballpark, just so you guys have a conception of what we're talking about. I'm not talking about $200, I'm not talking about $5. That's very rough what we believe, what I believe the number is. But, you know, that number will invariably, undoubtedly change, so.
Is that the original price?
And that's what the.
326.
So that is my best guess so that you guys, or we all can have a conception on that number.
The likely best is we use that on.
Yes, yes, and I think we all agree, yeah, that'll also come down, but, you know, if, if we can get grants and fundraising. So that's, that's based on that number.
So.
Yep, yep.
And the force to borrow might be a little more than.
Yep, yep. So that's just the ballpark, so you guys have a sense. It's a very rough ballpark. Okay.
But so you're, I mean, what's the strategy of vote you want? You want the master plan? I'm just trying to.
I want the master plan approved and I would like to set a date for the referendum as, as May.
So you're voting to proceed to refer, I'm just trying to get the change.
Yep, so that's what I would like the motion to be. So we kind of both are approving this plan and we have a plan going forward. That's kind of our timetable for the referendum. So I guess.
There's a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
Can we have the motion read again just so everyone's familiar?
Yes.
I certainly can.
Yes.
Whoever made a motion to approve the master plan as presented, segmented by Chris.
Can I make an amendment to that motion to include that also the referendum will be held on? Does anyone know the?
May 21st?
May 21st.
Is it the third, is it the second Tuesday?
Second Tuesday of May?
The second would be the 14th.
Correct.
Is that the date of the library election also?
Yes.
On the day of the library and school district budget election. In May.
2019.
2019. And is that amendment acceptable to the maker and the seconder of the motion?
Are you down, can you just read it one more time?
Okay, here's what I got. Motion to approve master plan as presented with a referendum on the date of the 2019 library and school district budget votes.
All right, thank you, Caitlin. So the motion's on the floor. There are no other questions, then we'll call the votes. Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? All right, they're passing unanimously, thank you. So then the contract is up next?
Yeah. So the contract for pre-referendum services was over on the table. I believe the total amount is 14,400 plus reimburseals, correct? So the not to exceed amount.
Right, and that covers basically tomorrow through the budget thing.
I put a list of assumptions in there about the coordination efforts with bond counsel, your attorneys, with a construction manager, with a certain number of public presentations so that we have an understanding mutually of what I think that includes in that number of hours. Obviously, we're not going to, if there's one extra meeting, that's not a big deal. But as I said, if we're going to do 50 meetings at the range hall and the old school and whatever, we'll have to talk about that. But I think that's a reasonable amount to cover hours between now and May to get ready for the referendum.
And I just would add that under our existing contract, it's my personal feeling that Paul and his firm have really over-delivered in terms of the amount of work that they contracted to do. I am more grateful for that, thank you.
I, I will second that. You've guys been great to work with and, you know, we continue to hear great things from, from outside people about you guys. It's not only, you know, our experience so far, but other people have it as well, so.
I appreciate it.
Make a motion to approve the pre-referendum services contract presented tonight by Paul. I second that.
Got that?
No.
Prove the pre-referendum services contract.
So just a, so it doesn't include bond council to come back or that expenditure?
Yeah, at some point, not tonight.
No, I know, I'm just asking because it's not total. I mean, it's listed contingencies where I, you know, points to be drawn.
And close construction manager.
No, I'm just saying here, yeah.
Should we, just for the record, I know we have a motion to approve the pre-referendum services contract. Should we list the company name with?
Yes.
Yes.
But when we're all paid.
I would just.
Okay. Okay.
You only want to put in the unit exceed? 14,400?
What's in there?
All right, all right.
I'll script your motion.
All right, so motions on the table, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? All right, we got it. Okay, so I guess the next item is talk about raising some money, so we have to take this all from the taxpayers.
Uh, so. What I would suggest is that perhaps the board wants to be involved or perhaps you assign a committee in the board. I'm not sure if I would handle that, but to have a foundation, which is obviously often a source of running campaigns like that as well. There are a number of different strategies, but we would probably want to sit down, look at a timeline. Because the key from my perspective, self-assured as an architect, is we're trying to determine the numbers not by May 14, but by a period at least 45 days prior to that. Because of the notification.
Yep, absolutely.
In order to actually say that we're offsetting some portion of the amount that we want to have the voters approve, you're going to need some sort of comfort level with what a fundraising campaign or contribution from your capital account or some combination of those would achieve. I, I would say most capital campaigns involve a period of giving that is not an immediate give and ends. It typically is over a period of one, two, or three years, for example. So there will be a bridge period where you have pledges, but not necessarily the cash in hand. So that has to be thought through in terms of how that gets presented to the public and what level that offsets the actual amount of the referendum. So I don't know that we can answer that tonight. I was simply suggesting that you're going to need to start making steps for that. We can't wait till December, January, it's going to be much too late.
We really have to have a number by, I would imagine sometime in March, really, so.
I would say at the latest, yes.
So, so that gives us really only a couple of months. So I'm definitely, we're in a four-month fundraising committee, talked about it already. So I'm going to be putting you as, as chair of the.
Yeah, the only issue I have is I'm on vacation from April 27th, so.
Uh, must be nice.
I was hoping to get this started in September, so. I mean, I hope so, get them started.
Well, we can, we can bridge the gap. We can bridge the gap while you're not there, so. All right, so I'm going to set up a, a committee. You have considerable, I'll just talk to. Uh, reserves, which I will, you know, let the committee kind of have to look at, how much we can, other reserves look at. We've also kind of started looking at grants. I think we're hopeful in that as well, so.
We need foundations like this. We need foundations, like, uh, this committee also.
So, how do we envision this working with the design steering committees? The design steering committee's still in effect? I would say...
They're separate.
Okay.
And I would encourage that, Chris is doing an awful lot, that you contemplate, you know, other members on the board, see if somebody could, uh, chair that.
Does anyone have any interest in chairing? Well, okay, nice. So, uh, if anyone else has interest on this committee, you can let me know, call me, text me, email me. Uh, we need to get this committee up and running, uh, it's imperative, so, I don't know, we'll point you. I'll talk to the foundation about getting some members on as well, um, and we can kinda really start going quickly. What do you think, Christian?
Twenty-seven. Especially you, like, that's...
Are we allowed to sell advertising on the sign out there? I don't, uh, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I think that would be, uh, starting a business, basically, you know, so.
Advertise what?
No, advertising, sell, sell advertising.
Oh, sell advertising, I thought you were gonna talk about...
For an hour, or for two hours, sometimes, having businesses be able to rent the... I'll stand out there wearing a sandwich bowl.
I'll hold you to that.
I, I would offer, I, when you, whomever is going to be involved with that, we'll, we'll talk to you early on. Obviously, we're not fundraising specialists, but we've been exposed to a lot of things. The main, the key thing is, as most of you know, most fundraising campaigns have two components, a silent, early part, a kickoff, so that when you begin the public campaign, you've got something set aside for the prime donors. So, we won't go into a whole primer of that, but having that number upfront is a big help in having a number by March, as opposed to the whole campaign where you know some of those numbers aren't gonna be right. So, talk to us early on, and we're happy to help. Uh, putting naming opportunities together based on the design and saying, here are things you might do there, other, other, uh, recognitions that...
The North and Baggs, you can build a little library or something.
I'm sorry, oh, now that's a tough book to take.
About the Altamont Enterprise newspaper.
The Times Union Center, yes.
I would just add that, um, there's a foundation meeting, uh, I believe on the eighteenth, correct? So, um, we have a board meeting at seven P M. on the eighteenth, and a foundation meeting at six fifteen. And I would respectfully suggest that maybe we could know every member of this board that's gonna be on the fundraising committee before we go into the, uh, foundation meeting on Thursday night of next week. Is that doable?
Yeah, I also, I, I hope to get this committee really going by next week, I'm gonna call, I'll call over tomorrow. I'll talk to her about this. Any other suggestions on the, on the fundraising committee? Any other names people would like to add outside?
It depends on, you know, I'm happy to help in these campaigns all the time, but it's just timing-wise, you know, and I'm... What's your time, because some hours call, some...
Really? Okay, um, alright, so, are there any other, any other business, anything else, anyone?
I have a couple other things, uh, that we should discuss. One is that Paul and I were talking today, um, as I've explained at other meetings, and Paul has explained as well, when you're running a school district public library and you don't own the building, um, you really have to be not one year ahead of the construction grant cycle, but two years ahead, because the S E D review is at least twelve months under current conditions. So, one of the things I asked Paul today is, um, this year, as you know, the state legislators approved a record amount for library construction grant funding. And thanks to, uh, many of you, but particularly Herb and, um, Chris Aldrich, uh, making good suggestions, we did get a grant for this year. We need to have, like, we need to have been working about two months ago on our, whatever we're gonna apply for next year. So, I asked Paul today, what are your ideas for something we can chip off of this project to apply for, um, in, uh, next summer? And what he suggested is that we take most of the items, uh, in the building envelope improvements and repairs, um, and package them together, so it would be, uh, resealing and repairing the skylight, masonry cleaning and repair, exterior wood repair and refinish, window repair, uh, door replacement, toilet room, uh, improvements, um, and package them together as a grant proposal for next summer. They, together, total up to about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so, um, I just wanna, uh, you know, I don't know if we need a vote, but just basically say that the, um, we've discussed many times the scalability of this project over two, three, or even four years to try to maximize construction grant funding. And so, unless I hear different, that's what Paul suggested should be the goal, and that's what we plan on, I plan on starting to work on tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, does that...
The one thing that came up, though, is there is not gonna be any more money coming into the libraries this year on the construction grants, because every one of the libraries has been used every penny of the money that they were, they were granted, so there not be any coming back into the...
This is true, um, and, uh, you know, Herb, Herb and I both have read that in email today and yesterday, so, uh, commend, commendations to Herb for following that, uh, minute to minute. It's a good argument, when we go to, um, lobby, uh, or do advocacy, uh, in February downtown, that statewide, every penny that they made available has been spoken to. So, to, you know, I don't know if all of you would agree with me, but that to me means there is need in the libraries across the state, and the need probably wasn't met this year, so maybe we could encourage the assembly and the senate to make at least that much money available next year as well in the, in the grant proposal.
And this has been an increase in the money from the previous year.
A significant increase, yeah, yeah. So, and we recently, uh, recently saw George Amador, and he said, hey, were you guys successful at getting some of that construction grant money? And I said, yes, thanks to Chris Aldrich, we were, because Chris had an idea that, um, that I didn't have. But, um, it's, it's a, it's an excellent point that they don't just write that budget and then forget about it. When they run into you, they say, did that work for you? Were you able to make that happen? You know, so they're, um, interested in our success in that way. So, I just wanted to let you know that. Yes.
Yeah, in working to develop this grant, as, as Tim said, this is a long timeframe, primarily because for school district libraries, in which the school district owns the building, the S E D review is required prior to the grant application, meaning that we actually have to submit a set of construction documents to the state education department for a building permit that has to come back then, prior to the actual grant application, which is typically the end of the summer. I will certainly help strategize and put all this together, but if we're doing a set of construction documents to submit to S E D, I just wanted to be absolutely clear, that's not in our pre-referrendum services, that's a, that's another thing. I just didn't want anybody to be surprised later and say, what do you mean, he's charging us to do this? That would obviously come off of the cost in the long term of the other project, but essentially, it's breaking out a project, putting together construction documents, and hoping that they can expedite review. Because even if we submitted it today, it wouldn't be here in time for the two thousand nineteen August application deadline.
Right.
So, uh, because we're limiting the project, and the reason we chose those scopes was twofold. One, they can apply to energy efficiency and accessibility, we can hit each of those boxes. Uh, but the second reason is, those are things that should be done regardless of whether the referendum passes in May or not. Those are building stewardship and maintenance things that, um, maintenance isn't applicable with the... But upkeep and, and improvements that should be made regardless. So, that, that was why those line up.
And while you're clarifying, I'm, I'm just gonna also clarify that from today to, um, September first of next year, may not be enough time to get this done, so while we need to approach it aggressively, it may be something that we end up turning in the next year, because that's how the timeframe that they put you behind. And we have discussed as a group, um, I'm not sure we had any resolutions or anything, but at our last board meeting, we discussed whether we would theoretically seek ownership of the building back from the school district in order to, um, shorten the length of the S E D review. And I think the prevailing, even though I don't remember a resolution, I think the prevailing idea last month was that it would be better to spend approximately eight thousand to look for an expedited review that S E D is offering, than to, um, spend probably the same eight thousand, you know, paying some lawyers to transfer property back to us. You know, you guys need to keep that dynamic in mind, um, over the long term, it may theoretically be better for the library to own its building and/or its grounds for this reason. But if we're gonna engage in that kind of transfer of property, um, first of all, we need the other party of the district to be willing, and secondly, um, you know, that's just adding more time-sensitive work to what we need to do here. So, I personally favor the approach of writing up this grant proposal, trying to get it in by September first of two thousand nineteen, um, and if necessary, paying, uh, that approximately eight thousand dollars for expedited review. And it occurred to me today, talking to Paul, that if we're gonna do this project, this overall project over about three years, and try to submit three construction grant applications to the state, one every year, we may need to pay that three times, uh, to have the, uh, the review be expedited each and every time. It's not, we have no control over the backlog at September, but we do exist under the conditions of the backlog that's stated. And all we, there are two things we can do, either ask for our property back, from the, our former property back from the school district, or pay for expedited review. But, um, the regular review, you know, you hear sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two months for projects to get reviewed, and we don't know that kind of... The market changes, the electorate changes, the board changes, I mean, it's just crazy, you know? And yet, it's, it's, we report to S E D.
I'm not sure, I don't really think so, what do you think?
Uh, because that question, it's, it's a very intuitive question you just asked. It's been asked multiple times in order to try and get away from the long extended review process. S E D used to have what were called single trade reviews, in other words, if it only involved one component of work, like mechanical or roofing, they might agree to expedite that and push it through. But because it was happening so often, they're, they're now not guaranteeing. And they made a list of the things that can be single, and it's a very limited list at the moment. They, they sort of, I guess they were getting burned because so many people were manipulating the projects to make that, that type of thing, and all of a sudden, everything had to move to the top of the pile, and their pile was just as deep as it was. That's my understanding of it, that limited, you know, they...
We looked at that list last year, because we thought we'd have nothing to submit until Chris came up with the idea of resubmitting what we had submitted the previous year, which ironically gave us two to do it, which is the amount of time you need. But, um, the, uh, we looked at that list and brainstormed and tried to find anything that needed to be done in our building, just because we didn't wanna leave money on the table. But that list is so short, we couldn't responsibly say, yeah, we need to do X or Y, because we would've just been making stuff up, you know, and that's not worth it, we got other things to do.
One thing I did suggest is that, knowing that this annual state grant through Division of Library Development's coming up, it used to be that, uh, reviewers at S E D were asked to expedite things in relation to that. If we can keep it a simple project and, and try and work on that, my, my discussion with Tim was, let's see what we can do to, to get it expedited, as long as we're getting it in early anyway, and see how much time before we pay extra money to, to officially expedite it. But we'll see where we are, and I guess my thought was, let's move forward with trying to develop it, and then figure out the variables as we go along, and keep everybody informed, obviously not spend money without getting approved, but let's figure out what the, what the options are.
So, we'll try to bring home some bacon there. So, Paul, didn't you wanna talk, or maybe you already did, about, uh, the construction manager, the budget, and the schedule?
I asked earlier if, if there was any clarification of what a construction manager does. I, I'm happy to talk about that if, if you think that requires it.
Just from my notes of our phone call today, that you wanted to make sure that it came up, and it has.
I, I did ask earlier, but I, again, I'm happy to talk about the difference between what a construction manager does versus an architect, but I, I know I've talked about it before, but you're not expected to...
Does anyone else wanna talk about construction managers? I mean, have you been about, anyone's got a good understanding?
We'll talk about it again in the future, I'm sure.
I'm sure you're not done hearing that, that term, so.
Right. That's something you want, right?
Okay. Is there anything else you wanna add?
No, I, uh, uh, yes, I'm sorry, one thing. I, the, the committee itself, and the, the board as a whole, you, you've really been a pleasure to work with. I work with a lot of libraries, as you know, and, and levels of dysfunction across the spectrum that you couldn't imagine.
We can get along pretty well.
But in general, you, yeah, you focus on it, right?
Maybe too good, that's why we always ask you to come back.
That's right, but, but the committee put in a lot of work, and that included staff as well as board members, and I was very present, the, the regular attendance and the great ideas that came out. And so, congratulations to all of you, it was, it was a very good dynamic.
Thank you. Uh, so where do you see the design steering committee going from here? So now, they have to get us from where we are now to our final product. How do you see that progressing? So, I'm gonna keep that same committee, because I want them to get us through the stretch. How do you see this, this process continuing?
We'll have meetings probably not as frequently as we did in the master plan, but there are a couple of key things we're gonna wanna be talking about. One is looking at this, and what adjustments are we going, wanna make? Are we going to want to make that reflect community input? In other words, how are we gonna talk to the community about this? Meaning, what, what rendering should I be putting together that people will appreciate and understand? What are the most meaningful pieces to the community, it's your community? Uh, secondly, as we get a construction manager involved, there are going to be decisions to make as we go along, or decisions to recommend to the board. Let's say the number comes in at X, and we need to cut out a quarter million, what are we willing to lose? Those are some, some decisions as we go on, or, or what do we add? Maybe, maybe it's gonna come in at less, and, you know, maybe my numbers were very conservative, and, and we'll have extra, you know, things. Do we cut the number back, do we add something in? So, there's, there's a lot of flexibility in this, and, and it'll, it'll change as we start to do renderings of it. It also changes as we start to look at the numbers, so that's what the committee will be doing. I'll call meetings. I would guess, not every four weeks, but every six to eight weeks.
Okay.
And we'll be updating, and of course, we keep the board updated as things are going along. But the general direction is certainly here, you know, this gets us from Buffalo to New York City, but whether we're going through Syracuse or Utica, or, those are the details, we'll work out.
Okay, and then, you know, so who the construction manager is, bond council, it's all stuff that we decided by the design steering committee, is that kind of, or...
Well, the board's gonna have to approve those contracts, but I, uh, we've talked about the process, and then it should come back to the board.
That's how I see it, 'cause that's how I also see it going.
Yes. Yeah, the nitty-gritty of how we're going to do all those things, we should talk about, so that the board can focus on the decisions that need to be made, and not all the research and everything united. That, that's how it typically is.
Perfect, and that works, and that's exactly what I was envisioning.
Does sound to me like we should schedule a design steering committee for, um, obviously not the nineteenth, which is a Friday, but shortly after the eighteenth, where we will have had another board meeting and a foundation meeting, so we'll have a little more, um, idea of where we're going, and then we'll know who's on the fundraising committee, too. You know, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying we pull out calendars right now, but, you know, you're... You're tied up a lot of nights, so.
That's why I pulled up my calendar.
Maybe as a starting point, you email me some dates in that, uh, late October, that we can, um...
And we're still okay with meeting at four, four thirty in the afternoon? That, that's a good committee meeting to...
Well, it's fine for me.
Because that's perfect for me.
Depends on the day.
Okay.
The day of the week, or the date.
The day of the week.
Okay.
Which days are better for you?
Right now, Wednesdays until the end of October.
Are the best days? Okay.
Which is when we were all...
Wednesdays are Thursdays before six routine. Uh, it's, it's my kids, not me. It's my kid about me.
They're good for you, too.
I will... Alright, well, you guys will figure it out. There's one last thing I, I wanna talk about, feel free to jump in if you guys, anything else you guys wanna talk about. Um, we talked about, and I think I have a good sense with the board plans in this, but we don't want to hire a media consultant this time. I, that's pretty much the consensus, but, uh, and I don't wanna go with a fifty thousand dollar media consultant, but at the same time, I wouldn't mind having someone for a very small amount of money work at a very small, for a small amount of time to kind of help us out. We're all full-time, busy doing other things. This, in order to get this expansion, and information on this expansion out, it's what we're gonna require us to quite simply have to go out, talk to people, communicate, and it may be beneficial to ha- have someone that we can, um, kind of also help us out with this. Uh, if, if we get... Uh, if, if we get a, a call from, uh, you know, a TV station reporter, the library can't advocate for this project. So we can advocate, but, but our staff can't. It might be nice if we had some person we, we could, uh, refer them to that just does a very small amount. That's just what I'm thinking about, conceptualizing, I'm really putting it into the design steering committee to vet it, talk about it, if you know or think of anyone, you know, presented to the board, um, but that's something I think the design steering committee should look at. Uh, that's just a thought I should have, because as president, a lot of times, everything gets kinda shrunk to me, so, uh, in a lot of ways, it's, uh, I'm thinking of how I wanna be, but, so, yeah, like, that's really what I'm thinking, like a publicist, not, you know, not coordinating some massive campaign, but someone that can help us, help me out and, and not, you know, inundate my, uh, my life with this.
That's a great idea, because it's not too early yet to start putting out positive PR about this whole project. I mean, you don't wanna inundate people with it yet, and obviously, it's not finalized yet, but just to start getting that in the minds of the residents of the town on a positive, in a positive way, that, you know, to me, that's definitely a great idea.
I, I certainly don't see this as a huge expenditure, but it's just something that may help us out, so I put it to your, uh, your capable hands. I think, you know, for most of us, we wanna present this and let this proposal rise and fall on the merits for it, but, um, it might be just nice to help us out and not worry about that.
I think I've one related thing about that, excuse me, one related thing about that is that everyone I've pounced that idea off, from Paul Mays to Tim Burke, uh, to other library directors, has said that they think it's a good idea to, um, not pay a high-priced media consultant in this particular environment that we're in, and that also, we should use that, and I, so far, but Fred Rigo, uh, idea that others have endorsed, uh, as a selling point. We're choosing not to spend thirty or fifty thousand dollars on someone to convince anybody to vote for this project. We believe that the project stands on its own merits, we're gonna put all the information out about it in as many forums as we can, we're gonna be as available as we can to answer questions, and if you, voters approve the project, then the thirty thousand or the fifty thousand we would've paid to a consultant will instead go to the project. So, um, the, you're the one that originally said it for me, and, uh, a lot of other people have agreed since you said it, so, and nobody has, just, that I've talked about, so.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to do a, a full-scale blitz, um, and as of right now, it's really kind of the design steering committee is gonna have to come up with this, uh, blitz proposal, so, um, or at least, and obviously, everyone is gonna have to chip in and, and give us ideas, but yeah, those are the kind of things we're gonna have to do. So, alright, that's the last thing I wanted, Paul, do you have anything more?
Thank you.
Tim?
I'm good.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second by Barry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, alright, congrats.